All right, good afternoon, and I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Townschepelangley Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. I'd like to add one other business, and that would be the motion from the Council Priorities Committee on cannabis retail. And so with that addition, if I could ask for a mover. Counselor Woodward, second by Counselor Arnison. All those in favor? Posed, carried. And motion to adopt the minutes of the regular afternoon council meeting of May the 13th. Have a motion, please. Counselor Kunst, and second by Counselor Ferguson. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Posed, carried. And now a motion to resolve into special closed for the items on the agenda and on table. Have a motion, please. Counselor Whitmarsh, second by Counselor Kunst. Mr. Backen.
Just to point out, there was one additional closed item handed out during the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we have two items on table, I believe. Counselor Ferguson, do you want to push your button? Want to push your button? Counselor Ferguson, do you want to push your request to speak button? How do I get you on? Did you wish to add something? Counselor Ferguson.
One would be under intergovernment.
Intergovernment, okay. Okay, so with that, last question, all those in favor? Posed, carried. Now go into closed. All right, good afternoon. I'll reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Townschepelangley Council. And the next item is presentations. We have Urban Development Institute here, Mr. Hugh Carter, regarding housing issues in the Township of Langley. So I'm not sure how you want to handle it, but the floor is yours, Mr. Carter. Yeah, I'll get it on. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Fros, members of council. Appreciate your hearing us as a delegation this afternoon. I have with me today, I have Jeff Fisher, who's the Vice President of the Urban Development Institute, who's very active on not only municipal affairs, but as well at the provincial level and regionally. In addition, we've got members of our Fraser Valley Committee. About five years ago, we established the Fraser Valley Committee of the UDI because we felt there are issues out here that are not necessarily the same issues as what we're facing, say, in the city of Vancouver, Burnaby, Richmond, et cetera. So we've got members of the committee here, Michael Garrett from Streetside, Tim Bonkus from Infinity, Jamie Squires from Fifth Avenue Marketing. So if there are any questions that, you know, we can direct towards them at the end of our presentation, that would be appreciated. We also have a UDI liaison committee. We have, I think, for probably a decade, and Raymond and I are the co-chairs presently. So if I could just get the PowerPoint up here. All right, so most of you should have this presentation, I believe. You received it in advance. But I will walk you through it. UDI represents, has been around since 1972. We represent about 850 members, and we're involved in all assets of building, both from the development side, construction, but also insurance, planning, engineering consultants, and legal profession, et cetera. So we sort of cover all facets. We do provide significant municipal fees and charitable contributions for parks, public art, et cetera, throughout these communities. And the economic impact of the industry is significant. We've estimated about a year ago that there was about $23 billion of GDP generated provincewide, or just under 235,000 jobs. So it is significant. I think most of us would admit that there's probably somebody in our neighborhood that's somehow employed in some relation to the development industry, whether it's a builder or a contractor or a professional. In terms of building in Langley specifically, there's about, we estimate about 8,200 jobs in the township of Langley directly. There's about 1,027 new housing starts last year, and 187 of those were purpose-built rental homes, and the vacancy rate in Langley has remained steady at about 1.5%. In 2018, the value was just under half a billion dollars. So building Langley, we engage with municipal staff through the liaison committee and other opportunities and issues such as bylaw amendments, affordable housing strategies, green building and energy step code, which has been rolled out throughout the province, electrical vehicle charging infrastructure, which is something new that's before council, as well as the application review process and discussion on CACs and DCCs and other building costs. We are facing a change in context right now in terms of the industry. The housing markets are probably cooling, if we all read the news. Housing starts are declining primarily because the bankers are not prepared to finance the projects if they don't have sufficient pre-sales. Interest rates have remained relatively stable. We've talked about rising interest rates for the last five years, I think, but they have remained relatively stable. So that's one positive. Construction costs have escalated substantially over the last two to three years. In addition, we have mortgage stress test rules that are putting a lot of pressure on our market, in particular in terms of people being qualification for new units in the industry. So that's become a significant challenge, and Jamie can speak to that if you have any questions. We also have increased demand side measures. The school tax, for example, on one of our properties in Langley, last year our property tax bill was $33,000. This year's tax bill is $93,000. So it's nearly tripled, and a large chunk of that is the provincial school tax, which is still being applied to vacant land held for development. If it's under construction, we managed to get that excluded through UDI, but if it's vacant land, it still applies. So that's a significant annual cost, carrying cost to the project, and that's an annual amount. We've got the additional property transfer tax, and of course, the speculation and vacancy tax on top of that. So there's a lot of pressure on the industry. I won't spend a lot of time on the nature of the industry, the change in context, because we've read the newspapers, but suffice it to say that prices have been dropping. And Langley, I think, significant in this slide is that there's been a 15% drop in the average MLS price for single-family, more dramatically than some of the neighboring municipalities. So the development process is complicated and involves a lot of consultants here. And just a slide showing all the people that are involved between the original acquisition of a site through to the actual conclusion and property management. So it's a very complicated process that we have to stick handle through. And Chuck Burke years ago put together the spreadsheet that is like a decision tree, but it gives you a sense of how complex the process is to get from beginning to end. I won't spend time on that. The components, the development process, I think you're probably familiar with these, and you have that in our presentation. But the risks are significant. One of the things that we look to in our industry is certainty, and the upfront costs these days are becoming more challenging. The land purchase costs have gone up dramatically. Servicing requirements, the standards are changing. DCCs and CACs and other government costs are going up. There's a proposal on, from staff, to increase the DCCs by, it was originally 111%, and we have a subcommittee, and we're presently looking at an 81% increase in one year. And we have very strong concerns about that, and we'd like to look at an ability to phase that in if possible, especially for those that have acquired land, and it takes three to four years to get through the process. So you can't anticipate that kind of an increase. So we'd like to have a discussion on that. Construction costs I mentioned have increased, I think, last year in the last six months alone, they increased 18%. So there's significant cost pressure. We provided, actually it was Michael Garrett, I think, provided this summary of a typical townhouse development in Langley, 120 units. And what you can see from this slide is that 60% of the purchase price of a new unit is comprised of the hard construction costs and land. What is notable is that 15% is the targeted margin, the return on cost, that the developer looks at. And why that's significant is that the banks won't fund anything unless it's showing a minimum 15% return on cost. And often, we try to strive for 20% because it takes, you know, three to five years to get through a project, so that's not an annualized return. I did some sensitivity on that, just for your information. So as you can see here, there's a 15% profit margin shown. If, for example, there's a 10% decrease in the average selling price of a unit from 675 to, say, $610,000, the 15% profit margin drops to approximately 5%. Conversely, if there's a 10% increase in construction costs, the return would drop from 15% to approximately 10%. Or as we're seeing today, where we've got a situation where costs are still rising and prices are dropping, if you had a 10% adjustment to both of those, we're effectively treading water. So I think, I just wanted to stress that, that that's what the industry is facing. I know there's a lot of discussion about the, you know, the returns that developers are getting on their projects, but 15%, I can assure you, is a typical margin that we're working on in the township of Langley. So obviously, it's very sensitive to cost increases as well as adjustments to the market. So just in summary, you know, what I would like to say is that, you know, so we have land, and we have a preliminary pro forma that we've developed for the project. And now all we need is, we need a site plan, we need municipal approvals, we need issue for construction drawings, we need sub-trade pricing, all the building materials, a schedule of sales brochures, signage, ads, website, sales contracts, a disclosure statement, a sales office, buyers, and the market to hold together for the next three years. So that's the nature of our industry, and it is, it does come with risks. It also comes with returns, but... In closing, I'd just like to say that we're committed to working with communities. We have a liaison committee with staff, and have for over a decade, and we like to be involved in working with these communities in building a better community and well-planned and sustainable environment. Just two comments I'd like to add. We do find that issues and policies that come before the Langley Liaison Committee in particular are often well-advanced by the time they hit the liaison table. And if possible, our preference would be to bring those issues to the table sooner so that we can have meaningful, thoughtful feedback and provide, potentially have some input into those policies that are coming forward to you as council. Secondly, we understand, Mayor Fros, that you've got a standing committee on a development management process review, that's a mouthful, and you're waiting for confirmation of one appointee at last reports. We'd like to be at the table, if at all possible, in that committee, and if possible, possibly broadening the scope, because there are people involved in this industry that have expertise that, you know, I don't have, for example. There are planning consultants, engineering consultants, architects, landscape architects, and all of these people are enmeshed in this business on a day-to-day basis, and I think can provide very meaningful input in terms of ways in which we can improve the process in the township. So that's the end of my presentation. We have members of our committee here, if you have any questions, and we thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you very much. And just on that committee, the work has begun, initial meeting, I'll be reporting on it later on in the evening, but, you know, we basically just started with the terms of reference. And we did make that final appointee, Marlene Best, who is well-known in Langley in the industry.
Okay.
And a big part of the work isn't just the committee, really, the committee is the steering committee, to get input from everyone, from the industry, from council, from people that, you know, that have input, and also to review other municipalities and best practices that's happening in the region. So that's, it's just getting going, but really, I appreciate your willingness to participate because we'll be looking for that input from the industry.
Good, well, I appreciate that. I know two members of our Langley Liaison Committee, Sean Bouchard of Quadra and Marlene Best, are on our liaison committee, so that's encouraging.
That's a good continuity, but really, it's to reach out and get the information.
Right, because I think the architects and landscape architects and planners can have some significant input on this, not just the development community, but thank you.
Thank you. There's council with questions or comments? Whoops, I just cleared it. Counselor Ferguson was next, mistake, I pushed the wrong button.
That's all right.
Whoever wants to speak, push again. Counselor Ferguson, you're on.
Who am I on? Who's on? Am I on?
You're on.
Okay, thank you very much. My lead's kept flicking around here. Thank you for coming, Mr. Carter, and guests, of course. Many of us know you from the community, and as the mayor said, I also am on that committee as well as Counselor Whitmarsh and Counselor Kunst as well. Our goal, obviously, and hopefully, we're going to continue to have this goal, is to obviously have an excellent working relationship with all the folks in the community, whether residents, whether renters, and of course, the developing community and businesses. I think that's important because when we work together as a group, we always do better and best, and we provide the best opportunities for those that live in the community. You know, I actually have three adult children, and none of them have housing yet. I'm sure that the costs have been very high, and I think that, I'm not alone, but probably folks out there think that, you know, there might be an opportunity now for, to get housing for those that can't afford. I don't know, the stress tests, the stress tests are quite high. But my question to you is, there seems to be a lot of layers in your business, and those that had, you know, assembled properties 10, 20 years ago, in not just Langley, but throughout the valley, they're going to do better than those are buying today. I call that a layer. And also, those that want to construct today and work on, perhaps, just maybe, that there might be also an opportunity for construction costs to lower because, and I was talking to construction folks, you know, two, three years ago, when the markets were really high, they couldn't get the builders, or the staff, or the workers out because they were, their time was so consumed by, they couldn't complete sites because they're so busy. If they've become less busy, there might be opportunities, and I'm not sure where that lies. Perhaps you can comment on those points I just made?
Thank you. In terms of the, in particular, construction, I think it takes a considerable amount of time for that to work its way through the system, and Jeff, I don't know if you can comment on that. There's been discussion at the UDI board level recently on that.
Yeah, I would say, basically, there's a hope that the construction costs, sorry, I had a cold. There's a hope that construction costs are going to be going down, but let's not also forget, there's a lot of public sector projects that are on the books, and there's a bit of a fear that that may actually make it much harder, basically, to lower the construction costs, including projects that we want to see, such as the, you know, the line that's going to be coming out hopefully to Langley.
And don't get me wrong, because I understand that, you know, for you to move forward, you need the banking, you need all the other things, and, you know, all the components have to come into play, and you're a real challenge, and that's why I call you're at a bit of a crossroads right now, because what is going to be the next phase of development in not just Langley, but throughout the region? I think once you get out of the region, you know, there's probably different pricing things you could look at. But within this region, especially when more and more people, that's my next, my next and last point, when they're expecting more and more and more people to come in the region, they keep talking about a million people, but you're going to have to find the housing, or somebody's going to have to find the housing for these new folks that are coming forward.
You're right, Counselor Ferguson, and to address the land cost component, I mean, the last three or four years, there has been significant, so we call it speculation, on land, and as developers, sometimes we're having to sort of absorb that to, if we want to have a project. So the good news is that with the market cooling, those speculators, I think, have been driven out of the market. So I think those of us that have been in the industry a long time as developers are now, hopefully, there's going to be a bit of a period where we can actually, you know, get our projects to market without competing for land with other people that are not really interested in delivering the end housing product.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you very much for coming today. One of the things, and perhaps it may not be yourself, but maybe somebody from UDI, I'm interested in the idea that we're collaborating for more affordable housing. And I do know, just to touch on what you talked about, about the Skytrain coming, and that we have opportunities to look at our land use planning here, I think, and the degree to which UDI is actively involved as a partner in those conversations, is what I'm wondering.
Thank you, Counselor Arnison. It's a very good question. I think Jeff can speak to the fact that transit-oriented development is one of the focal points of UDI. We're a strong supporter of that. I know at the liaison committee meeting, we have been suggesting that perhaps it's time to revisit the Willbrook Plan and determine what opportunities there are for the township to take advantage of this significant investment, which is going to have its terminus here in the township and the city of Langley. Jeff, what can you add?
I would also add that in terms of the affordable housing, we do actually have a standing committee at UDI on rental housing that's been working with several municipalities with regard to that tenure. And with our other liaison committees, we've been actively involved in municipal housing strategies. So we have actually worked quite collaboratively. For instance, in Burnaby, Ann McMullin, our president and CEO, is on the mayor's task force that's dealing with the affordability issues there.
So we do have some tools at the UDI level that can assist you with the township in terms of going forward. We have the benefit of that knowledge.
Yeah, just touching on Burnaby, on the way here today, I heard that they were moving a motion tonight so that they could have affordable rental units at long last, so when they have new developments around their transportation hubs, that they are taking that into account. And so I do see a lot of value in collaborating and making sure that we're sitting at the same tables discussing this to make sure that our policies are evolving that way. So thank you.
You.
Yep. Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I want to thank you for the presentation, too. I know that I've been a tad, a little bit critical of UDI, and I wanted to sort of explore that a little bit, mainly around, you know, trying to find the right balance between development and fees and costs in order to deliver the services that we need to provide to new residents without the funding source to do so beyond property tax. And how do we find the right balance between that, so the cost mechanism that you mentioned, where we could raise costs, but maybe we make projects challenging economically, we have people that purchase land under old structures, and then the structures change? How do we, how do we find the balance with UDI and something like that?
Thank you, Counselor Woodward. Good question. I think one of the ways in which we find a balance is through the liaison committee, where, for example, under the DCC increase, we're looking at possibly phasing it in, and this is what the city of Surrey did a number of years ago when they had a significant jump. And Jeff Arison there at the city of Surrey was heavily involved in that process, and we have talked with him, and Jeff and others here are on a subcommittee addressing that. But so that's one way of dealing with it, is that if people have invested in land and it takes them time to get through the process, is to phase these in so that the infrastructure can still happen, because we recognize that it's important to get those roads and services built, but also in a fashion in which we can sort of afford to sort of rule that out.
I would also add, the earlier the notice, the easier it is for the industry to adapt.
Yeah, the DCC question is interesting. I have it on my list, so I can ask about that now. So Township of Langley, we haven't raised development cost charges since 2012. Seven, eight years, construction costs have gone up dramatically, which you referenced in your presentation, yet we haven't raised the costs for us to construct certain components of that. So we haven't raised it for seven years. So you characterized it, I believe, as an 83% increase in one year that apparently is down now from 111. But we haven't actually done it for seven, so maybe we're in the range now of 10% per year that we haven't been collecting, actually. Is that unreasonable?
I think to answer the question, I mean, we had a committee a number of years ago when it was changed the last go-around. So it is a substantive increase at one time. We recognize costs have gone up, but also there's an ability to review the program, and the city of Surrey does this, and I don't mean to say that they've got all the answers, but they've been very successful in looking at a five-year window and saying, here are the costs that we anticipate over the next five years, and finding a way to build that into their DCC program. And then they have an annual review, and Jeff, we've talked about this, and other members of the committee, we're fine with an annual CPI adjustment on an annual basis to reflect normal increase in construction costs for the infrastructure that's going into the ground, because we recognize that is the case, and we've said we support that. But I think it's just this change right now that we need to find a way to sort of get, work through that. Jeff, can you add?
Yeah, I mean, doing the annual increases is certainly a best practice, and we strongly endorse that. In terms of the DCCs, I think it's the phasing that, you know, we'd ideally like. I think we understand, basically, we know construction costs have gone up, and it's no different for you than it is for us. And we recognize, basically, the DCCs have to go up. It's just a matter of if we can phase them in to get to that final number.
And I guess for me, as a new counselor, the frustration, you know, that you weren't asking for the phasing in 2013, or 2014, or 2015, when housing retail costs to the consumer were going up significantly, yet you were still operating under maybe some of the old cost structures around some of that land, you weren't offering to pay more in terms of the fees while the profits were high, but then, of course, now that we're in a bit of a downturn, it feels like we're being asked to phase in some of the stuff when it actually annualizes to a very reasonable amount. Would you think that that's an unfair characterization?
I would say yes, because we, you know, we meet quarterly at the UDI liaison table, and so this is, unfortunately, I think it's one of those things that staff just haven't had the time to devote to, to looking at an amendment to the DCC bylaw for a number of years, and they've admitted as much, and we understand that because we're all busy. So I think it, I think it's on both sides. We've just, we've basically been putting this off, and they've acknowledged as much. So, you know, I think what we're asking for in terms of phasing is a reasonable request, especially in light of current market conditions. As Jeff says, we're not, we're not suggesting that the costs don't need to be incurred, and the UDI has always been supportive of paying for development. You know, we've always said we're prepared to pay our share if it relates to development-driven costs in the municipality.
I'm going to circle back to the balance, because I'm actually sincerely struggling with how to deliver and raise capital money to purchase the infrastructure we need from amenities, however we define amenities. That's being incurred because of development, but also not being to the point where we're just expecting to go to that well all the time and making projects uneconomical. That's not the, that's not the goal either. But how do you find a balance with UDI when it feels to me like you just lobby against every fee? So I'll give you an example. So does the UDI support community amenity contributions as a structure?
We went, Counselor Woodward, we went through about a year and a half, public consultation engagement process, which the mayor encouraged, and we came out of that saying, we actually reduced the list to something that we thought were community amenities, and which we could say to our homebuyers, you know, we're prepared to pay for that amenity because it's going to be a benefit to you when you buy a home in this neighborhood. And so we reduced that list down, and we came to a number that we felt we could all agree to, and that's actually kicking in, I think, this July. So we're literally just in the process of absorbing that. So we, you know, we do have a process, and it has worked, and I think that's the way to go through it, is public engagement as well as the industry.
No, and I attended those open houses for the CIC program, and I remember getting a piece of paper from someone here in the audience, actually lobbying very hard against it. And I'll give you an example. So, for example, in the letter UDI sent to council regarding our CAC policy, it said, "All CAC costs are attributed to new development in part because the township needs to catch up with development that has occurred over the past two decades." And now it feels like we're having the same conversation about the DCC program. But it also said, "Costs of the proposed CIC capital projects be funded by current residents through taxes or general revenues, we recommend." Do you really believe that? Do you really believe that we should be doing that from property taxes?
Counselor Woodward, I'm not sure what you're reading from, but it's not a Urban Development Institute presentation.
So I think, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to get to a point.
You're taking me back in time, so I apologize. Jeff, go ahead.
I think, basically, there are some, basically, amenities that certainly are tied to development that we think, basically, should be definitely funded by development.
I'll come back to something a little more constructive.
Thank you.
That I'm trying to get to a balance where, how do we, how do we find the right structure with the industry if it feels to some like the industry will simply label any cost or fee as too high?
Well, I have to come back to the fact that it's a public process that we go through and engage on these issues, and I apologize, I don't have that letter in front of me, but I know, for example, to be specific, there was a new, there was a proposed new public works yard, was on the list, there was a facility... There was a facility at the Langley Airport. There was a performing arts center. I mean, these, in our mind, were items that were, yes, as Langley grows and matures, that kind of infrastructure makes sense, but that's something the township as a whole should be supporting, and it shouldn't be on the backs of new residents. And so, as Jeff said, what we supported were those items which we felt could be attributed to new development, and we were prepared to accept those, and in fact, those are coming in in this July. So I think that was a good process and a good outcome.
And I appreciate your presentation, and I just want to leave on, just the idea was to explore, how do we get to an idea where it is perceived and operates like a partnership, where we can communicate transparently, understand the challenges that the industry has, but also feel like any fee will be opposed, that's all. I just hope that we can try to find a bit more of a balance in that regard.
I would just add one thing in terms of the DCCs and the CACs. We're not necessarily against them, and quite frankly, if you guys don't have DCCs, you can't build the infrastructure that allows us to actually build the housing and job spaces in the township. And we recognize that. I mean, it's just going to slow down the process. So you do need a revenue source, and we recognize that a large part of that revenue source is going to be from the development industry, because it's about growth. It's, I guess, identifying what items are associated with growth. It's also, basically, how in terms of the timing and the phasing and providing the notice that are critical from our point of view.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. I mean, we don't say no to any increase, that's clear. I mean, Raymond's been at the liaison table over the last seven or eight years, so he knows that we're always open to how do we accomplish what we both need to achieve, and that's paying for the infrastructure that allows growth, so.
And hopefully, we can transition to a more regular revision of the DCC program, so we're not sticking the industry with this large one-time increase. Would that be positive, probably?
Thank you. Yes, and we have said we would support that.
And I believe you're going to have the annual increase. I'm pretty sure there's going to be an annual increase in the new bylaw.
I don't want to make, yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good points. Thank you. Councilor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you very much for coming today and presenting good information. Just a couple of questions I had. I've talked to different people, developers and people talking about the length of time it takes to sort of process applications and to go from the beginning stages to the end, and I think you suggested maybe three to four years in some cases. And I know that we have a standing committee that that's one of the things that they'll be looking at, but I wonder if you've done any sort of research or look at what, how that would, what kind of difference that would make if that was sped up, cut, and how that would affect your finance charges and some of those things. I noticed that 6% of your costs are roughly based on finance. I'm wondering if you've done some analysis on sort of how that might affect that?
Well, yes, I guess the answer, the simple answer, Councilor Whitmarsh, is that I think most of us here today have done that analysis ourselves. I know, Tim, do you want to provide any comment from your perspective, Infinity or Michael?
I think that time is always money. So if you go from three or four years down to one or two years, it's obviously going to save costs of the projects and also make, the majority of developers have either banks as investors or other firms, and it's going to make them much more willing to invest in the future as well. And they're constantly looking for certainty when it comes to their investments, and having a certain timeline definitely makes it much easier for us.
Michael, is there anything you can add?
Yeah, just to, you know, for us, the shorter the period, the less the risks are. They're more certain, so things of market fluctuations, for instance. You know, we bought property three or four years ago based on what the market is at that time, and the longer the period is, the more changes can happen, construction costs going up. So the shorter the period, the less risk, certainly for us.
Councilor Whitmarsh, the last comment I can make is that it has been challenging not only for, well, it's been challenging for the municipalities as well as the private sector in terms of process, because, you know, I sat beside the city manager for the city of Vancouver recently, and they were talking about how the challenge they have is retaining staff, because people are always being pirated onto another municipality who are looking for staff as well. So the challenge is always retaining staff and processing those applications that are sort of in, you know, on somebody's desk. And if there are ways in which we can short-circuit that, then I think that would help all of us and potentially help keep the housing prices as low as possible. Jeff, I think there's some of the municipalities have a professional.
Certified professional.
Certified professional program now for some of the, some of the.
Building code issues.
Building code issues. I don't know if you can speak to that, but that's, we're hearing process from, you're the fourth municipality we've met with council now, and it's good to have this dialogue, and this is a consistent theme that's come up, is how do we shorten the processing time?
Yeah, I mean, in some municipalities, a lot of it is, for instance, in Vancouver, a lot of it is just the amount of regulation that conflict. And so how do you prioritize, basically, the regulations, basically, from the municipality? So they're going through a regulation redesign project to try and determine what regulations aren't necessarily needed, but also how do you address those conflicts much quicker when they arise?
And lastly, I could just add, the city of Surrey, their planning director, I think, was up recently to talk to the UDI. I don't know if any of you were able to attend, but it was interesting. One of their proposals is they've come up with, I think it's 10 or 12 rental housing projects, which they've had designed and vetted by their staff. And so basically, you take one of those 12 designs, and if you've got a site that can fit that project, then it's a very short approval process, because it's already been pre-approved effectively. So that's one way to speak to your issue, Councilor Whitmarsh and Councilor Arnison, is that's one way Seattle's tried to sort of short-circuit the process and get more rental onto the market.
Okay, that's really helpful. I had one other quick question. You mentioned the idea of phasing with the increase of fees and phasing that. What would phasing look like for you? Is it, you know, over a period of a year or two years? What does phasing look like?
Well, as I mentioned, Surrey had phased their increase when it was substantial over three years. We've talked with the liaison table about ensuring that the township is whole in that regard, so the three years might be more than 100%. It might be 115%, but a way in which the township stays whole, and we have an opportunity to stagger this. So I think there's a good opportunity there to come up with a good solution.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation and answering the questions. Great questions, things that we all struggle with, certainly municipalities and growing municipality, and, you know, development pays for development. I know, I appreciate your comments on, you recognize the challenges that municipalities have, and I think what Councilor Woodward was getting at is how do we make this work so that we all understand how important this industry is for jobs and for housing and low cost of housing? So lots more discussion. I'm glad there's, you know, you're working well with our staff, and we'll continue to work with you to try and provide homes at the lowest cost, most affordable, and also recognize the needs of the municipality. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and council. A pleasure.
Hey, thank you. Next delegation is regarding our community standards bylaw by our staff, and welcome here.
So, Your Worship, just a couple of words of introduction. This is as the clerk notes, clerk's note identifies on council's agenda, this matter was considered by council at the last meeting and was referred for a presentation. And Ms. Sengera, who manages the body of enforcement department, is here to provide counsel with the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Sengera.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council. I would like to begin by providing an overview of the presentation. I will begin by explaining the township's overall bylaw enforcement approach, which we often refer to as a progressive enforcement model. This will provide some background when reviewing the proposed bylaw. Secondly, I will provide a brief overview of the proposed community standards bylaw. Third, explain formal enforcement options that are available to staff. And lastly, a review of proposed changes to the bylaw enforcement policy. The township promotes an enforcement philosophy that seeks voluntary compliance through township bylaws where possible, which is often achieved through education, information, and non-penalty enforcement, including a reasonable timeframe to comply. Formal enforcement action may be taken, including foregoing education and warnings in situations where a bylaw violation constitutes an obvious hazard to life or property, or the offender knows or ought to have known that their actions contravene the township's bylaws. An example of that would be a reoccurring bylaw infraction. Typically, when receiving a property complaint, a bylaw enforcement officer begins with education, which may be communicated in person, by phone, or in writing. Bylaw enforcement officers will work with owners or occupants to gain compliance, and this is achieved by providing property owners and occupants with a reasonable timeframe to comply. This will vary depending on the nature of the infraction. When education and voluntary compliance fails, enforcement tools such as fines can be issued to encourage compliance. When fines fail to gain compliance, other enforcement action is considered, such as legal action. The proposed community standards bylaw updates and consolidates four existing bylaws that cover provisions related to unsightliness, graffiti, abandoned properties, and noise. It's one consolidated document for the ease of locating and referencing minimum standards that generally overlap to the public. The title "Community Standards" is commonly used by other municipalities across Canada. So the first part of, portion of the community standards bylaw covers unsightliness, and the current Untidying and Slightly Premises bylaw has not been updated since 1982. Its outdated and its framework limits the ability for staff to adequately address property standard issues. Current provisions are not entirely clear and include very few terms, which makes it difficult for the public to understand. The proposed bylaw updates provisions and terms and clearly identifies minimum standards related to keeping a private property clean, neat, and tidy. The proposed provisions are heavily based upon past complaints and feedback that staff have received in the public. Consideration has been made to impose provisions similar to neighboring municipalities. So common concerns that staff have come across when dealing with the public are as follows, which have been incorporated into the proposed bylaw: tall grass, weeds, uncontrolled growth, noxious weeds, which is also covered under the provincial Weed Control Act, accumulation of yard waste, garbage, discarded materials, materials scattered such as firewood and dirt, fence panels leaning or collapsed, accumulation of construction material not in use, vehicles parked on front yard landscaping, wrecked vehicles, and vehicle parts. The following photographs are examples of concerns that are addressed under the unsightliness section of the proposed bylaw, such as scattered firewood. So this would not be in compliance with the proposed bylaw. The after picture would be, so what we're looking for is neat and tidy. A fence collapsed and leaning, so that would not comply with the proposed bylaw, as well as overgrowth. This is a vacant lot with significant overgrowth. Some properties that staff have come across have significant overgrowth with a combination of tall grass, weeds, and noxious weeds. So moving on to the next section of the proposed bylaw, graffiti. Given the similar purpose of the graffiti bylaw, which enforces the placement and removal of graffiti, it has been added to the community standards bylaw, sorry. I skipped two photographs. So the proposed bylaw would also cover tall grass, which we often get complaints about beginning at the, at the beginning of spring. And then this photograph shows various other infractions that would be covered under the proposed bylaw, such as wrecked vehicles, discarded materials, and yard waste. So now moving on to the next portion of the bylaw, which is graffiti. Given the similar purpose of the graffiti bylaw, which enforces the placement and removal of graffiti, it's been added to the community standards bylaw directly after the unsightliness provisions, and minor housekeeping updates have been made to the language and terms. The next part of the proposed bylaw covers abandoned properties. The current abandoned properties bylaw requires an owner of an abandoned property to secure structures from unauthorized entry. One of the options for securing a structure under the current bylaw is boarding. Two concerns that are typically raised by the public and staff are that boards are easily removed, which is a safety concern, and boarded structures are an eyesore. So under the proposed community standards bylaw, boarding requirements have been strengthened to prevent unauthorized entry. The provisions provide an inspector with the authority to direct the owner of a property to paint boards or color treat them when necessary, such as in urban areas, and associated fines have been added to the bylaw notice enforcement bylaw. Now, where an abandoned property has not been secured or is not being secured, the inspector may give notice to the owner to secure the abandoned property in accordance with the bylaw. Part seven of the bylaw outlines the process for serving a notice to an owner. When an abandoned property has been damaged because of unauthorized entry, a notice from an inspector will state that the owner must secure the property within 10 days of service of that notice, which has been relaxed from five days that's imposed under the current regulations. Fees for attendance may be imposed at the sole discretion of the township for costs associated to staff attendance where an abandoned property has not been secured in accordance with the bylaw. Unlike other sections of the bylaw, a clear timeframe has been imposed because of the safety risk associated to abandoned properties. In addition, a clear and transparent process is necessary should the township bill the owner for costs associated to the attendance of staff. And the last section of the proposed bylaw covers noise regulations. Under the current noise regulations, improvements can be made to simplify the bylaw so that the provisions are easier to understand. The current provisions do not adequately address low-frequency or bass sound, and they're inconsistent with industry-standard noise assessment practices found in other municipalities across the lower mainland. For the proposed noise regulations, an acoustic engineer was engaged to assist with updating sound provisions and terms. Provisions are simplified and more consistent with industry-standard noise assessment practices as found in other lower mainland municipalities. This will allow for greater understanding and predictability of noise regulations for those working, living, and visiting the township. Primary changes reflected in part nine of the bylaw are how sound is measured. A DBA scale has been added to measure low-frequency sound or bass sound, the creation of three categories of sound zones. So when voluntary compliance fails or the bylaw offense requires an immediate response, the following enforcement options are available to staff: fines, fees imposed under the proposed bylaw, remedial action, or legal action such as prosecution or an application for an injunction. So that covers the community standards bylaw. Moving on to the bylaw enforcement policy, which is separate from the proposed bylaw, and taking into consideration feedback that was provided at the regular evening meeting on May 13th, updates have been made to the bylaw enforcement policy, and as part of the proposed updates, the 250-meter radius requirement for complaints has been removed. It will clarify the township's enforcement approach and how bylaw enforcement department prioritizes bylaw complaints. But it's important to note that as a result of removing the 250-meter radius, bylaw enforcement, the bylaw enforcement department may see an increase in work without the current staff necessary to support the additional workload. Additional bylaw resources may be required for 2020. The updated policy will be brought forward to council for consideration at the regular afternoon meeting of June 10th. Any questions?
Great, thank you very much for that. Thanks for addressing the concerns that council raised at the last meeting. I had one question on, and I've talked to staff, but I want to make sure we're all clear of it. In the, there's a section regarding to recreation vehicles and boats parked in the front yard, and yet we have another bylaw which allows for it between certain times of the year. How does that relate to this bylaw?
So the zoning bylaw regulates recreational vehicles and then allows for a certain time period where they can be parked in the front yard. And so the intention under the community standards bylaw was to address, under 3.1F, was to address vehicles and recreational vehicles and trailers that are parked on the front yard landscaping portion and not necessarily, not the driveway. And with you bringing that concern up, I would probably recommend adding landscaped portion after front yard to clarify that, if that's okay.
Sure. So we'll add that as amendment to landscape portion. Okay. Okay, we'll hold that one, and appreciate that. Okay, I've got a list of speakers here. Council Ferguson.
Oh, I'm looking forward to, you're going to be bringing something forward on June 10th, right? I'm looking forward to that, because I know that many of us at the council, we have all sorts of complaints from residents regarding unsightliness. Now, I'm not worried about the odd. Now, I'm not worried about, uh, the odd, the lawn that's larger than others grow. I'm worried about these, like, wrecked vehicles or stored vehicles or trucking companies that, uh, figure that they can park on a ten-acre parcel within the ALR. So my question to you is, all these are the concerns to me. You know, they're leaking their oil and other fluids. When you do get a complaint and you proceed, how long does it come to, uh, conclusion, if, if at all?
Um, it varies, and it depends on the situation. So, uh, we start with, um, education, and we try to obtain voluntary compliance. If that fails, then we move into, move on to ticketing and issuing fines. Um, if that fails, then we look at taking legal action. So it could take anywhere from a few weeks to months or over a year. It just really depends on the situation.
So when do you kind of, if, I'm always interested how this works? 'Cause when do you finally lay the law down, or do you enter something under title, or how does that usually work?
Um, we, the objective is to look at whether or not we've done everything that we can from our end before we move on to legal action. So that's reaching out and communicating with the property owner, meeting with them, um, understanding if there's any other circumstances that are taking place that would be affecting why they're not complying with the bylaw, um, taking those things into consideration, looking at the history, and then making a decision to move on to legal action. Unless there's, um, serious safety concern that needs to be addressed right away.
Well, my final question, do you get to the legally action stage very, very often?
Um, it doesn't happen very often. A majority of property owners and occupants do comply before we get to that stage. So there's a small percentage of property owners that do not. So, yes, we do get to that stage.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Councilor Long?
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks for your presentation. Yeah, in regards to the clarifying whether we're talking about a driveway or, or a landscape yard, there's some issues of wording, I think, in the, in the zoning bylaw too. It's, it seems confusing, so hopefully that can get straightened out through this process, 'cause that system appears, appears to be working quite well with the, allowing a period of time for people to have their RVs to get cleaned out and so forth. But I'm very concerned here about this two-hundred-and-fifty-meter thing, because the report that was originally presented to us on May the thirteenth, strictly, uh, specifically, was a recommendation from staff not to remove the two-hundred-and-fifty-meter, uh, border, I guess. And it said here very carefully, uh, or clearly, that limited resources require bylaw enforcement to establish clear parameters and a consistent process. And in, in accepting complaints, then, uh, outside of that two-hundred-and-fifty-meter can often result in big, long lists of properties throughout the township. So now the report has been altered. It's still got the same date and still the same report number, so I'm not trying to get anybody into trouble, but there are two different reports. The report now says, yes, we'll remove that because council's given us that direction. So I just want some clarity from Mr. Backen and from, uh, all of us here that is that something that, that council has passed a motion on, and that's the way it's gonna be? Or has the, has the report been changed because staff feel now that it's manageable to go outside two-hundred-and-fifty meters? And I think that's a bit of a facetious question, because it's very clear in your presentation and in the original report that that's gonna require a lot more resources. So I, I'd like to, Your Worship, figure out how we can maybe get back, 'cause a few members of council want to see it changed, but I think I myself don't want to see it changed.
Mr. Seifi?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess two parts to the, uh, yeah, the question. The first part, Your Worship, just to clarify, as stated previously by Ms. Engera, the, uh, the bylaw that is being considered by council this evening does not relate to, uh, the two-hundred-and-fifty-meter provision. That is something that's included in the policy. And if council wishes to direct staff to proceed one way or the other, we have, we have time until the next meeting of council to deal with that, that provision, because it's not part of the bylaw, but rather the, the policy. And now as far as why the change, as stated again by Ms. Engera, we often provide council with, uh, information that prompts responses from members of council, and we sometimes, not all the time, uh, take that as, as something, unless we are hearing from other members of council, we take that as something that council may wish to consider. So we've taken the liberty of, of incorporating that based on the feedback received. And if council wishes us to not proceed with that, certainly that's something that could easily be, be, uh, be managed, as, as I said, because it's the next meeting of council on June tenth that staff anticipates being able to bring forward the policy. So it's the bylaw that we're dealing with this evening. The bylaw does not make reference to the enforcement part of things. The policy does, and we can make it suit council's desire and direction, whether the two-hundred-and-fifty-meter is there or not. And I guess, thirdly, yes, staff does believe that removing that will add additional workload, but I wouldn't say it's significant, because we don't know exactly how much, based on past practice and, and experience. We expect there to be some additional, uh, workload for staff to manage. But what that is, it is gonna be difficult to estimate, because sometimes think, things take a lot of time, or at least a year or two, before the community is aware of, of, you know, the provision, and then start to sort of behave in a way that, that the regulations, uh, provide them to, uh, or requires them to behave.
Well, hearing that, Your Worship, I just want to say that's interesting that staff takes input from council, and certain council members are quite vocal about their opinions, and others may not be, because others may feel that it's all okay already. So maybe you can take this as one member of council saying, hey, take my input, because I think, uh, that keeping this, uh, this two-hundred-and-fifty-meter might have some credence. And I might add that in the part that has been removed from the report, it was very careful to say that, that staff now receive a lot of complaints from outside the two-hundred-and-fifty-meter, uh, range, and those are generally big, long lists of folks that have decided to drive around the township and think on people. So anyhow, we'll see what happens on June the tenth, but, uh, I, I don't think it should be a slam dunk. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilordred?
Yeah, well, I'd just quickly agree with that. I think that that'd be good to debate that separately. Um, so if there's, if there's a recommendation coming on the tenth to remove that, then I think that we should, we should look long and hard at that, 'cause I don't want to necessarily pre-commit. It sounds like we would be pre-committing to adding resources to, to enforce that. So I think that would be a part of a larger conversation, hopefully. Um, so thanks for your presentation. I enjoyed it a lot more than the last one, obviously. Um, for me, I think I had a couple of questions, though. You've made, you've made a couple of changes, but the document that I, that I received on Thursday was exactly the same as the one that we saw, I think, at the previous meeting. So you've mentioned that, uh, ten days changed somewhere in the document?
Yeah, I've changed the, the five days to ten days for serving the notice.
Pause this now, just so I can keep track.
Let me just bring up, uh...
So would we have to move a separate amendment for that, potentially?
Um, it should be included in the new package. So it's under part seven, it's, uh, section seven-point-five.
Five, so I was, so I was gonna ask about that. So the process is not typically, you're not sort of, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting by Mr. Seifi, that's not, that's a, sort of an extraordinary situation. It's not typical where you're gonna put something in the mail, you assume they have it, and, you know, fi- five days plus one minute later, you're on their property, performing the work for them, and then sending them a bill as per the, as per the other polit, the other document where you can basically send them a bill for any and all costs.
Yeah, even with the, the fees, there's some discretion, right? There's a difference between, um, a property owner who is securing their structure, um, and then on a Friday, they secure it, and all of a sudden on Saturday or Monday, when we return, it's unsecure, versus a property owner who we're contacting, calling, sending letters to, and they're ignoring us. So the fees, um, are to the sole discretion of the township, so we can make a decision based on the history. The owner is taking, um, the steps to make sure that their property is secure. We can understand that they can't be there twenty-four-seven, but as long as they're taking the steps, the fees are just another tool that we can use, uh, for enforcement.
'Cause I think, can you explain attendance to me a little bit in terms of the terminology? So, 'cause under the fee type, it was attendance, and then the fees, you know, just for the actual costs incurred by the municipality for all related labor materials and equipment, as well as charges, as well as charges contained in any other bylaw the municipality. So it sounds pretty ominous. It sounds like some kind of thirty-grand bill is gonna show up in the mail. And maybe I didn't even know about it, because I, you didn't verify that I've got it. That's how it sort of reads on paper, but what's the real world, uh, situation?
Um, so, that's, that's the reason why we have clearly in the bylaw stating what, um, what the service is, like the steps are. What is proper service, so that there's, uh, transparency to the public. Um, but following, getting up to this point, there are phone calls that are made, there's letters sent out. This isn't the first step. This is sort of the step that comes after trying to make contact with the property owner to get that property secure. So in the real world, it's picking up the phone, doing door knocks, sending a letter before we even get to this stage.
Yeah, but so you, but it's not required for you to do that?
No.
It's not required, but that's typically our practice.
That's just our enforcement approach.
Yeah, okay, and that's, that would be outlined in a different policy document, I'm understanding.
That would be in the enforcement policy that will be coming forward on June tenth.
So ten days on this now, so that would be, I don't know if it, 'cause I guess there's different versions floating around. We can sort of look at which version we're approving or considering approving.
The ten days should be in the version that, um, is part of the, the package for tomorrow, or for tonight.
Maybe I printed the wrong one, okay. Um, I had a couple of other questions. I also brought up in the last meeting noxious weeds, so where, and then some of the complications around some of that. So if you have blackberries present on your property, you know, you're not allowed to have them there. You have to remove them. And there's quite a challenge to removing some of these noxious weeds. So the flexibility in the bylaw is pretty, seems, reads to me a little, little bit limited, that if you end up with one of these plants, it's really hard to get rid of. How flexible are we in, in being a bit more understanding that someone may not be ignoring it, but is having a real challenge with them?
Yeah, so going back to our, um, bylaw enforcement approach, um, so if a bylaw officer comes to your, your property, and you have blackberry bushes, and you explain to them that it's gonna take X amount of time, and this is the process, um, that you need, these are the steps that you need to take in order to get rid of the blackberry bushes, they're able to give you, and they have the discretion to give you that time in order to do those steps. So there are the provisions that are in the bylaw, those are the rules, but the approach is trying to work with the owners to gain that compliance. So for any type of file that comes through, there isn't a black and white time period in which you have to comply with the bylaw. It's based on the situation and the circumstances.
Yes, I mean, and I'm not saying that anybody in the, because I've had some, some, you know, experience with the bylaw department, and it was very positive, and it was, we worked through it. I was, and I complied with the bylaws, and it wasn't really an issue at all. It's just that's not what the document says. So how do I reconcile that, that we're approving a bylaw and then sort of hoping that that's the way it occurs in, in, in the municipality? Is there any, is there any suggestions around, around that?
Maybe I can project a little bit. I know in my past life, when I was a police officer, we have a lot of laws that we enforced, but we also had this big lesson on discretion. And, uh, you know, certainly the law has to be there. Maybe you can comment if this is the way it works in a township. But you also have to allow the bylaw officer the discretion, and I think that's where the, you're talking about the enforcement bylaw. We allow the discretion to work with the offender, and, uh, yet you need to have that hammer, I suppose, if they're not willing to work with us, and not willing to comply, and not willing to come up with a plan. So I think there's that, and it's hard to put that in a policy, the discretion of the, of the bylaw officer, and sometimes the discretion of council when it reaches us too. So maybe, I don't know if that helps, but maybe...
Yeah, no, that's correct, uh, Your Worship. Um, the officers have discretion, the provisions are in place, but depending on the situation, the circumstances, they can allow for a shorter or longer period of time to comply. Um, I think the, the enforcement policy will add, provide some clarity on what the approach is, the general approach, and, um, it probably will fit a little bit better with the, the bylaw once you, once you review it.
Yeah, okay, and I think that makes sense. Would it make sense to, to review the, the enforcement policy at the same time as, as considering this bylaw for approval?
Um, I think it's going...
If they sort of run in conjunction, and we also have this two-hundred-and-fifty-millimeter issue to deal with?
Uh, the Proposed Community Standards bylaw goes June tenth for final? Yeah, so you, you would have a copy of it prior to that? So does that, does that work for you, Councilor Long?
Sort of does. I mean, I, also too, just, and I'll wrap this up, 'cause I think that, that was helpful. It's just, you know, it's passing a bylaw that, that gives a lot of discretion can be, can be really flexible and really, and really good. But it also, the way it reads, like, is it, do you, is it unreasonable to consider requiring a couple of notices in the bylaw, even though that might be in the policy? So that the policy reads that, you know, you have ten days, it's in the mail. I may have it, the person, the resident may have it, may not have it, and the municipality has the right to enter the property. Would it, it just reads sort of, um, in a way that, that could be, could be used against a resident in a negative way, not that it ever could be or would be, but that it could be.
Yeah, and so for, for the abandoned properties provisions, uh, the reasons why, the reason why there's, um, such a detailed process is because, uh, we may impose fees, so we want it to be transparent in the bylaw, that these are the steps that we have to take to get to that. But there's discretion that's used, uh, when we're dealing with abandoned properties. The, uh, bylaw enforcement policy doesn't just apply to this bylaw. It applies to all the bylaws that we're enforcing, uh, within the township.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, just a comment and a question, and a tip. So I personally prefer the fact that we are potentially going to remove the two-hundred-and-fifty meters, because I think that, well, I got a long list of properties that, that I've noticed myself, and I don't live close enough to make a complaint, but it, no, it's not yours, Bob, it's all right. Don't worry about it. Um, so, you know, and I really think this process has been very helpful to have a further discussion, because originally the staff report had one recommendation, but then based on other feedback, we are now considering and are going to look at that on June tenth. So I think that's very helpful. I think that's how our policy should be developed. Um, the second question that I had was really around the fact, so if we can just go back to vehicles that are parked on grass or other parts of the landscape. Um, do we have enough clarity to know? 'Cause I've seen this happen where people really want to park something, and they just excavate and they take away the landscaping, basically, and they more or less put in an, um, an extension to their driveway adjacent to it. It, would that fall under that kind of category, or is that kind of a gray area?
Ramon, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to extend your driveway, you need to obtain a permit?
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. And the tip is that goats are actually really good at eradicating blackberry bushes. I've seen them in action, they're absolutely amazing. So pig be goats would be really good on a small lot.
Thank you, Councilor.
Throw that in.
And, and, and hogs. Council Kuntz?
Yes, thank you for your, um, presentation. I have a question about, uh, property owners and homeless. How many, I don't know where this fits in the category either, but how does the Township of Langley, um, help the property owners that are, have the unfortunate situation of having, um, a homeless, you know, camp or campers, you know, on their property? Um, is, is it their responsibility to remove them? Or do we work together with the property owners to do that?
Uh, thank you, Councilor. The, the portion of the issue that bylaws deals with is the unsightliness part of it. So often when we have homeless on a property, at some point accumulation of garbage and discarded materials happens. Um, that's, that's the part that we deal with. But because we have the contacts over at RCMP, um, who do the regular walkthroughs to the parks with us, what we normally do is we sort of mediate between the two. And the RCMP are really the ones that enforce the trespass act. So we'll coordinate that they enforce the trespass act, and then the owner will coordinate the cleanup at the same time, um, so that the cleanup's done, and then the individuals are, um, removed from the property.
So the cost is to the homeowner, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Long?
Really quickly, if we're gonna have a big dust-up on those two-hundred-and-fifty meters on the tenth, can you please research other communities? 'Cause I think one thing that we need to be careful with is that we do the similar things as our neighbors do. Not that they, maybe we're gonna do it better, but can we have a, at least an idea of what other communities use for, for distance for complaints?
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilor Long. It's not uncommon, I have looked around. Uh, it's not uncommon for other municipalities to impose restrictions on how they accept complaints. Um, and it's heavily based upon the resources that the department has. So really, the two-hundred-and-fifty-meter radius is because we don't have the resources currently. So we want to deal with the complaints that are really affecting, uh, the neighbors, right? Versus somebody living in Alder Grove and complaining about an activity that's happening in Walnut Grove.
But I mean, if, if you're gonna remove the two-fifty, are we gonna put it to five-hundred, or seven-fifty, or have nothing? So it'd be nice to know what other municipalities are doing, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other, um, questions. Thank you very much for your presentation and for answering those questions and concerns. Okay. Move on to delegations, and we have, uh, Delia Anderson. And, um, thank you very much for coming. And you've, unlike the others, because these are delegation, those are presentations, you have five minutes to present to council.
Perfect.
Excluding questions, and if you just provide your, your name and where you live, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Greetings, Your Worship, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Delia Anderson, and...
And my name is Catherine Saul.
And yeah, I go to school in Trinity Western. I don't reside in the Township of Langley currently. I live in Burnaby, but I go to school at Trinity Western University, and we're here on behalf of our school, and also more largely on behalf of the Blount Eco Forest. So I'll just kind of start and paint a picture of that area. So I'll just kind of start and paint a picture of that area for you. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to go into the forest and see it, but it's a wonderful example of a coastal western hemlock forest. It has these wetland features, such as a ground-fed spring and a bog environment inside of it. It's quite a wonderful place. And kind of what we're here to talk about is the proposed cannabis facility that's going to be going in, um, right next to it essentially in the Glen Valley. And we just wanted to talk about kind of the threats that a facility like that may have on this forest, and how essential it is to not only the surrounding community, but the university itself, the township, and the students that attend the university. So I myself have been working in the forest for the past three years alongside other students such as Catherine. Um, and we've had the opportunity to work alongside community members and different people from other universities and do these amazing studies. And it's just been really essential in a lot of people's lives. The forest itself came into fruition by just a very intense engagement by the community itself, working with the township and the university to preserve this piece of land. And Catherine's just going to speak a little bit on student engagement with it.
Yes, so I have been an attendant at Trinity Western University since two thousand and eleven, and the Blau Eco Forest was donated or funded towards Trinity Western University in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. So over my eight years at Trinity Western, I have seen many students, I can name at least ten off the top of my head, that have worked in the Blau Eco Forest and have furthered academic studies on species such as the northern red-legged frog, spagnum moss, and all these different species and habitats that are essential in the Blau Eco Forest, and what that's done for their academic furtherings into grad school, um, and spurring on other hearts and minds and education around the Langley development area. So this has been very transformational for them and their academics, as well as just for everyone in Langley to have this piece of property.
Yeah, and why we are kind of here to talk about the facility in regards to Blau Eco Forest is we think that there is a significant danger posed by the facility being built that closely in proximity. Not only is there considerable air, noise, light pollution from facilities such as cannabis production facilities, uh, we're especially worried about a possible effect to the aquifer as it's a forest area with these wetland environments, and a bog is very, very dependent on the water table that is underneath all of this area. So we are very, very worried about kind of this practice, drawing from the same aquifer and possibly depleting the resources and things like that, as well as polluting the environment in other ways, like the light. And we recognize that the, um, the people who are in charge of putting this all together have made promises to reduce the light pollution and reduce scent pollution, but we're also worried about what that actually means, um, in regards to what actions they're going to be taking to do this sort of thing. Ideally, what we would be asking for is the preservation of the Blau Eco Forest, whether that means moving the facility or preventing them from having the facility in that area, or putting sort of intense restrictions on what they're allowed to do. Um, we're not entirely sure what it's going to look like, but our main goal is just to preserve this ecosystem. Um, and we've, oh, pardon me.
We have done hydrology studies in the Blau as well, and so we test the aquifer in the water table, and currently we know it to be about fifty centimeters in depth. And that is very critical for the spagnum moss and all those other species. So if the cannabis facility were to go in and to draw water from that source, it would deplete that quite a bit. And we have data over the last three years that is showing that that, um, water source is going down already, and that is just a huge jeopardy to the state of that forest.
Yeah, exactly, it's, um, a significant difference even just between, oh, pardon me, the last two years. My voice is really cutting out here. Yeah, and another thing that we just wanted, well, I personally wanted to talk about is seeing that these promises might not necessarily go through. As in my own hometown of the Sunshine Coast, um, I've watched as people have sort of break in promises, or broken promises, and then the mediation was not good enough, as in two-foot-tall trees were put in place of thirty-foot trees that were removed from a fifteen-meter buffer from the ocean. So, yeah, there is significant worry of what's going to happen with the Blau Eco Forest if this facility were to be there. Yes.
Well, thank you very much for bringing your concerns to our attention. Um, I know this is, um, we were working for quite a while, I'd say long before this council, on the effects of, uh, the cannabis industry in, in our agricultural lands, and that kind of thing. And there's been, and there's layers and layers and layers of regulation from the federal government, provincial government, Agricultural Land Commission, and township. Uh, we're limited in what we can prohibit at this point, and that's documents from the Agricultural Land Commission and the, and the, um, the Province Ministry of Agriculture. Uh, the regulations, they're reg, they have to have a permit from Health Canada, which addresses some of the concerns you've raised. Where we can, uh, where the municipality comes in is through building permits, through environmental assessments, um, through setbacks, that is in, in compliance with our regular agriculture, um, industries. We're very limited in what we can do. There is a motion coming later, uh, in the, um, in the, in the package today, if you stick around, regarding, uh, that we, if, if council considers it and passes it, that we'll be asking the provincial government to allow the township aligning to put more regulations on. But again, they're relying on the provincial government, and we are very restricted in what we can do. I think you understand that, you've probably heard that, what we can do. But we certainly are addressing some of the concerns, but yet it's also an agriculture industry which has some, uh, I guess, um, ability to, to function that the municipality is, is very restricted in what we can prohibit and what we can regulate. But thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions from some councillors here. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you very much for coming today, I truly appreciate it. Um, it's interesting to hear your comments, because I have been to a couple of meetings where students have given presentations, and I do know that there is a active pursuit of scientific information about the bog itself, and to try and find out the degree to which, um, that water table might be receding, and if it is, what impact that will have, and in effect, why that is, because it is a very special locale. Um, I'm wondering if anybody has done any research to try and consider whether or not it might be analogous to the Burns Bog situation that we have over in Delta, where effectively a large reserve more or less has a buffer zone around it in order to protect it because of its special status?
Yeah, um, thank you, counselor. I don't know if any studies have been done regarding an actual buffer zone around the bog area. I know one of the previous students at Trinity Western did do a sort of mapping project, where she was looking at the limits of the bog and where that went to and where the forest began. And I myself have looked at the hydrology throughout the bog and the forest to kind of characterize it as well. It's a pretty complicated thing to see where the bog actually begins and ends, um, and that is kind of the most sensitive area itself. But, yeah, we definitely are looking into that, because we want to know which areas are areas of largest concern, and how can we best protect those sorts of things? There definitely has been a drying of the bog. We even had, um, a previous student from, I think, two thousand and fourteen was when she graduated. She came in, and her first comment was that it was much drier, and we tried to find a species that was previously located along one of the property lines. Um, and it was a species of spagnum moss, and it's completely disappeared from the area because it's dried up so much on that one side due to just recent development of housing on that side. So, yeah, there is some kind of qualitative data that we can look at that does show us that there's already been an effect.
And if I may add to that as well, I don't have much experience with the Burns Bog, but in contrast to, say, the Langley Bog, one thing that makes the, the Blau so special is that it is situated in this forested habitat. It's not just an open meadow, grassland kind of area. And so it's very diverse in terms of deciduous ankyphorous forests, big-leaf maple, western hemlock, western red cedar. I personally just did a course study out there this last year doing dendrochronology, dendrochronology, tree ring dating work, cross-dating, and we actually did find a shore pine in the center of the bog, which is a very wet, um, historic species that dated back to eighteen ninety-three. And our analysis concluded that perhaps the bog once was dominated by a shore pine, and now has moved more towards this transition in a particular section parcel where the bog is dominant with coastal western hemlock and western red cedar. So that these shifts are changing, and the bog in the water table is very critical in that regard and worth conserving.
Um, it, it does seem though that the studies would really create kind of a baseline, at the very least, for an understanding of what currently is there. Not that it helps in terms of depletion, but I know causality is very difficult to, to chase, because there's so many other things that take place. But it does seem there's likely a correlation between water draw and the whole bog itself, like a giant sponge being drawn out, yeah. Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you, there's no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to reports to council, and we have forty-five minutes, uh, left to, to the rest of the agenda. Uh, so I'll start with F one, this is Agricultural Land Commission application number one zero zero three six seven, Nureli Mohammed Farms Limited, and there's a recommendation not to authorize referral. Could I have? The recommendation, Counsel Long moves, is there a second or? Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion, seeing none, I'm going to call the question on F one. Carries unanimously. Move on to F two, this is LED, electronic billboard signage, and, uh, we recall we had a delegation at one point, and this, uh, this is to authorize staff to further pursue the applicability and appropriateness. Uh, Counsel Ferguson moves it second, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Long.
Well, I'm not really in support of this. We have a policy now, we don't have billboards anywhere in the township, even though there's a few pop up here and there. So this is going to be departing from that policy, I guess, and exploring, uh, these electronic things. So I'm not that keen on them, even though there's a bit of money involved. So the recommendation is to look into it, but is it to approve, your worship? Because if it is, that's a different.
Further pursue, so I would, I would anticipate there would be a report coming back to council. Uh, and this is more to give council, I think, some background on, um, whether there'd be an interest and what, what that would derive for the township, Mr. Back, is that?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So there's another decision point.
Yeah, but I think, I think when the delegation came forward, I, I, I supported getting some more information, but I really wasn't keen on it, and now this seems to be another supportive motion. So anyway, that's, if that's the case, I'm not supporting.
Okay, thank you. And just a bit of background, I know that there was, uh, from that delegation, that, a request for this to come back, and staff have been working on it, so I think they need the next, the next little bit, but thank you for that. So at this point, I'll call the question on F two. And it carries, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Long opposed. Uh, move on to F three, this is Booth Furniture and Rim Neighborhood Planning Subteams Terms of Reference Report. And this is just another, uh, I guess, um, along the process, uh, re, um, report back to council. And, uh, if I could have a motion, Counsel Ferguson? It's not receipt, it's endorsed, the neighborhood planning, uh, so it's been moved. Right, Counsel Ferguson, second by Counsel Long, discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question on F three. Carries, Counsel Woodward, opposed. Move on to correspondence, uh, there is a motion for receipt, but I'd also like to, before I take a motion, it's asked that we, um, uh, endorse or, or request our staff to work with, uh, the city of Maple Ridge, um, to accommodate their needs. And a little background, when the township of Langley had the twenty-ten summer games, uh, the city of Abbisford and the city of Port Moody were kind enough to, uh, provide facilities for us at the time. And when the city of Abbisford had their summer games, uh, we provided similar, uh, I think we had the canoe kayak events also in this, in, um, our, our waters. So, uh, there's precedent to it, and I think it's this good neighborly thing to do, and if we could have that motion to, to receive and endorse. Counsel Long, second or, Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion, Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Well, thank you for providing that feedback, because, um, I wasn't aware there was some reciprocity, but that makes sense. Um, I, I did have an inquiry there, though, having to do with the fact that if they're going to use the LEC, if we could just look into what kind of scheduling conflicts we might have. And, and I know the remuneration, I suppose, that if we're allowing people to use our property and vice versa, there wouldn't be any. But I just thought there might be some other costs that would be associated, not necessarily with the LEC event, but for traffic management and other things that we might have to consider. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Yeah, and I believe the LEC would be the outdoor, um, there's a sand beach volleyball, so they're not taking up the facility. But yeah, those are good, good comments, thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question on G one. Carries unanimously, and move on to, uh, receiving the minutes, the Recreation, Culture and Parks Committee, could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Kuntz, uh, discussion, Counsel Long.
Uh, in receiving, I just wanted to point out that there was some discussion apparently at the meeting, and there's going to be more about the ACUCC admission rates and so forth. So I would just like to make sure that the members of the committee are provided the report, which I've got, uh, researched, it's report nineteen dash forty-nine, uh, schedule one, which gives some of the rationale that staff gave for the different rates and so forth. So if they're going to discuss the rates, uh, the future rates and passes and so forth, please let's make sure they have that report to reference.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, just to remind council that, that, uh, the committee has been sort of outlined that, that we were going to send them that, uh, three or four items to review in regards to Alder Grove, in regards to youth rates, trying to remember them all now, but youth rates, potential residency requirements, and some special access for Langley or Alder Grove residents, and so all of that's been sent. And they're planning to take that up from September and have that completed by December.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Okay, so, uh, see no further discussion on the receipt, I'll call the question on H one. Carries unanimously. Move on to other business, and so I'm going to put Counsel Arneson on board. You've got to notice the motion.
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, so I'll, I'll just read the first one, it's quite short. Uh, whereas council received a report on April fifteenth on the early adoption of mass timber construction for buildings up to twelve stories. Whereas council adopted the report, but has received no further detailed information regarding this emerging, uh, building typology, which utilizes solid or engineered wood as a primary load-bearing structure. And whereas mass timber construction aligns with a number of township policies related to green buildings, carbon footprint reduction, energy conservation, and sustainability values overall, and has the co-benefits of faster construction seismic superiority, and may be more economical than other traditional types of construction. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs staff to engage with the Wood Council of British Columbia and request a presentation at a future CPC meeting on these new innovations, as well as outlining anticipated changes to the Canadian Building Code in two thousand and twenty related to mass timber construction.
Is there a second or, Counsel Long seconds, discussion, Counsel Long?
Yeah, uh, it says CPC meeting, but it could be any council meeting too, you know, they could give a delegation, it doesn't have to wait.
Yeah, they need some time.
Yeah, so, uh, it would be good, very interesting. Peter, what's his name, will come likely, and, uh, it's very interesting what's happening with that technology, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll, see no further discussion, I'll call the question on I one. Carries unanimously, and, uh, move on to I two, Counsel Arneson.
I know we don't have a lot of time, so, huh, okay, so I won't read the whole thing, uh, because I'm going to speak to the motion. Therefore, be it resolved that township of Langley commit to the use of fish-friendly flood control engineering and work with senior levels of government in order to proactively support the restoration and upgrading of existing non-fish-friendly technology in concert with the addition of any new flooding infrastructure so as to preserve and enhance habitat for wild salmon. Can I speak to the motion then, it might help?
So just, I'll look for a second or, is there a second or? You, you moved it, so I need a second or? Counsel Kuntz seconds it, so now you can speak to the motion, thank you.
Thank you, worship. Um, hm, so I just want to allude to the fact that, um, we have very high standards currently in terms of engineering, and we do try as much as possible to enhance fish habitat and passage throughout the township of Langley. Those are best management practices, um, and so there are a number of things that this can achieve. But just generally speaking, it helps with fish viability and mobility, because all the engineering projects, if they otherwise don't consider fish, are actually, um, sort of dooming fish to mortality and not being able to adequately, um, swim through the waters and get to, uh, their spawning grounds as well as out to the ocean and back again. So, um, I brought this motion because with the onset of climate change and global warming, this is even more of a challenge. But in our challenge, I think we have a really good opportunity. So working with other levels of government, we can, um, collaborate and find the funding in order to look at the infrastructure that we currently have, and if we are augmenting or changing it in any way, to put it to the highest standard. Because I think our objective should be creating the most fish-friendly, uh, infrastructure that we can possibly do. And so if we have financial help to do it, I think it's all to the good. So, um, primarily this motion is just to express our commitment to these principles and to look at engineering opportunities within the jurisdiction of the township for a more positive outcome to help our historic fish stocks, uh, to be viable in challenging times.
Great, thank you. Uh, interesting, I know, um, did a little video clip for, I think Metro was on, our fish-friendly culvert system. So there's lots of things that township are doing already. And I know the fish-friendly pump over at Salmon River, uh, over, uh, you know, pumps the Salmon River into the, um, into the Fraser River. We've got several things. So I'm just wondering, is this more of a, of, um, asking, you know, it says commit, but are we really wanting to get information back from staff on what we're doing and what, what, where the gaps are? Because I'm just not sure about, about this. about, about this, if we just have this, you know, staff come back and inform all of us on what we're doing already, and what we can do, what more can be done, just wondering.
I like the idea of the gap deficiency, because what I noted in doing the research is there are areas where we work with others, we work with stakeholders, other levels of government, so I know that the township does a really good job, but I'm just looking at opportunities that are going to be coming forward, and maybe if we have a structure or a framework in place, we can make better decisions about what it is that we need to do, and then have them happen in a way that's, that's meaningful and substantive to the degree that we can, so, yeah, that's my long-winded way of saying, yeah, I think deficiency sort of objectives are helpful, and a staff report would probably achieve that.
Mr. Backen, is that sufficient, the way the motion stands, to give you the direction you need?
Well, you, I think you have a referral motion, your worship, has been moved or seconded.
So the, this motion's been moved and seconded?
Correct.
So just wondering if this motion, as it stands, or should the word refer?
This motion, as it stands, is a commitment, so I think you're suggesting it be referred.
Referring, so, okay, okay, so Counselor Whitmarsh moves the motion to refer, is there a second or? Any second or? Sorry, Counselor Long, discussion on the referral, I think it still captures what Counselor Arnison, I see no further discussion, so I'm going to call the question on the referral. Thank you, and it carries unanimously. And so now we're going to move on to Counselor Kuntz, Counselor Kuntz.
So would I speak to this first, or do the whereas's first?
It's your choice, the most important thing is you have to say that therefore council direct, because that's the motion, you can do the whereas's if you wish.
All right, I'll start with the whereas. Whereas the residents residing in and bordering on the agriculture land reserve and agriculturally-zoned properties in the Township of Langley are greatly concerned and disrupted by the production of cannabis using intensive agricultural, agricultural processes, and whereas the township has been advised that the provincial government has given more authority to local governments to prohibit certain methods of cannabis production, therefore council direct staff to prepare a farm bylaw that would provide the Township of Langley as a regulated municipality and with the ability to regulate and if deemed necessary, restrict or prohibit growing of cannabis in the ALR and other agriculturally-zoned properties for council's consideration and referral to the Minister of Agriculture for consideration of approval.
Okay, is there a second or?
A second.
Second by Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Kuntz, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes. So the government has permitted the growth, use, and sale of marijuana. My intent with this notice of motion is actually to recognize the rights of property owners, especially in the sensitive areas where this will impact the quality of life for so many residents. For example, as we know, in Glen Valley, there is a potential grow-up facility close, in close proximity to approximately 90 property owners, a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility, also known as Wagner Hills, a winery, an equestrian facility, Alder Acres, Eagle Acres, as well as the Tom Blau Eco Forest, all within one kilometer of said marijuana grow operation. We have rules where we can smoke marijuana, why we should not, why should we not have some rules around where we can grow marijuana, as this has the potential to severely impact the quality of life for people living in our rural neighborhoods. As stated in recent correspondence received from the Minister of Agriculture, farm bylaws can deal with operational matters aimed at enhancing land use compatibility, promoting environmentally sound practices, and in some cases restrict agricultural uses. To date, the ministry has not received any cannabis-related zoning or farm bylaw proposals for consideration from the Township of Langley.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as much as I am going to support this motion, I still thought it was odd that we, you know, we have to be cautious as far as doing things, and this afternoon in the council priorities committee, we, you know, discussed moving forward with sales of cannabis of some sort, and of course, we haven't made that decision, but we're referring it to the public, and also with the kind of a proposed possible green light, not guaranteed, but possible, and here we are, you know, these are the main reasons why we probably don't want to proceed with, too quickly with the sales of it, because we've got these other issues that are above front and center, issues of over, issues of new product and new locations, issues that are out there, and as Delta and Richmond and Surrey have indicated, that they lick, like a few other things resolve before they start going into the, the sales business.
Talking about the...
I realize that, but so I will be supporting, my question to staff, if I may, have we got any pull whatsoever, since we're a regulated community, as compared to a non-regulated community, with this type of motion, if I may?
Backen?
Your worship, in theory, we have the, a broader ability to have bylaws adopted, but it's subject to the minister approving those bylaws, so in theory, there's less constraints, I would say this, in theory, the number of constraints are less, but the standard of the constraints are much higher, than that they must be compatible with the views of the minister of the day, and that's going to be our greatest challenge.
Thank you.
Counselor Long?
Thanks, your worship, I was just going to say that we had some interesting discussion this afternoon, and in fact, Mr. Chu is still here, and there were some slides presented that discussed some of the, some suggestions at least, on how we can approach this, so perhaps we're going to be able to refer this to staff, to have some of those things that were discussed this afternoon, brought to fruition, your worship.
Yeah, I think the, thank you for that, the discussion that we had this afternoon, staff are aware of that discussion, and this is, I think that can be incorporated into this motion without amendments, is that correct, Mr.? Yeah, because we had a good discussion, but this, I think, captures the gist of it. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you, I, you know, really think this is a good step forward, we certainly have been, as we had in our presentation today, suggested to us that, you know, that the ministries would not allow us to restrict or prohibit growing of cannabis in the ALR. However, I do think that this would be a, you know, a formal motion, and formally that we would make a request for us to do that, and, you know, they can certainly then formally respond to our formal request, which I think is a good idea. One of the, in talking with staff, one of the concerns that has come forward is just maybe just a little bit of the wording of this particular motion, and I might suggest, after I speak, just a slight adjustment, but the motion says right now that talks about the ability to regulate, and if deemed necessary, restrict or prohibit, and one of the concerns might be that the ministry might allow us to regulate, but still not allow us to restrict or prohibit, and so we would be getting into some of the minutia of regulating, require more, would be a downloading from, from the ministry to us, saying, yeah, sure, go ahead, and you can regulate, you can regulate all you want, as long as you don't prohibit or restrict, and so I'd be concerned about that, downloading, how that might affect us financial, from a financial perspective, and so I'm wondering, as an amendment to this, that we actually would remove the words "ability to regulate" and "if deemed necessary," and simply say "with the ability to restrict or prohibit," and so we're very clear in what we're asking for, we're not asking to regulate, we're asking, actually asking for the ability to prohibit or restrict, which would give us both options of restricting it to maybe location or, or whatever, or to prohibit it completely, but not to get caught in this idea of a more general term of regulate, which the ministry might give us, and we might find out that we actually didn't really want that in the first place, we really just wanted the ability to restrict or prohibit, so I'd like to suggest that change in wording.
Thank you, some, one more speaker, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Just, Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, that's where I was going to go as well, and trying to, trying to find a way to make this work, where we give some more direction other than create a farm bylaw, I don't know if Counselor Kuntz can fill in a little bit more about what we're, what the bylaw might look like, or what the kind of regulation you're, you're looking to get to, just because maybe, I'm not quite clear what kind of, is a bylaw going to come back, and then we're going to be going through it similar to the, you know, similar to the council procedure bylaw, or similar to the community standards bylaw, and then trying to, you know, work it out, or is there some broad strokes that we can get to, to give some more clarity about what I'm sort of supporting, because I do support sort of limiting where the cannabis production can go, and whatever regulation we can, we can put in place, I'm definitely supportive of, especially in the area of Glen Valley, but still want to understand exactly what kind of direction we're giving, and hesitate a little bit with sort of the, take the comments from earlier today, is there some way we can sort of work some of it into a clearer direction as part of this motion?
Mr. Backen, I think I'll refer that question to you or to Mr. Seffy, you know, really, we're asking you to come back with the bylaw, and if there's enough in here, based on the discussions we've had, and Counselor Woodward's and others' comments, and now, I haven't accepted amendment yet, but we can, you can maybe assist council on how this amendment may help when it does come up, and, and then if there's enough in here to provide staff with the direction that's required.
Certainly, your worship, there is a bit of a challenge, I think, between resident expectations and then the authority that we have, or sort of the authority we could have from the ministry. I think an example might be that, well, maybe we'd like to prohibit these sorts of operations in Glen Valley. That is something that's, again, theoretically possible, because as a regulated community under a farm bylaw, that, that could power could be granted by the ministry. The likelihood of that being granted is somewhat remote, because they seem to be suggesting that these sorts of operations are permitted operations on any ALR land, and that's our challenge. I think our greatest fear is, is then followed up with the fact of if there is some sort of regulation, are then we perhaps endorsing the approval, endorsing the concept, or worse, are we then simply being called upon to be the enforcement arm? As we mentioned this afternoon, part of the challenge we've seen, where other communities have actually simply adopted the provincial regulation, is that then not only could the province regulate it or enforce it by way of having, you know, legal action or actions taken, the municipality can do so through their bylaw enforcement arm, and that's something I want to council to be cautious of in their direction, because if we're regulating, are we simply going to become the enforcement arm for the ministry in that perspect, in that event, and is that going to be satisfactory? We may not want to be part of that enforcement arm at all, in fact, we may want to take other actions, but I think that's the genesis of the discussion.
Okay, so this motion gives enough direction to staff to come back with a...
Motion requires us to bring back a bylaw, and there'll be one of two theories, I suppose, to somehow regulate so we can control, or to actually ask for that special permission to prohibit or to, to, I guess, restrict, and I guess that's the key word is restrict it, and that's going to be a tough challenge for the ministry to deal with.
Counselor Woodward, is that, is this your question?
Yes, one more. My... So, so we're not really focusing so much on the word prohibition, which we, we kind of sort of seem to be accepting is, is not possible, or are we still going to attempt, we might still attempt prohibition, so maybe leave the motion as it is, because sort of getting letters from the ministry that read like, well, you're not proposing bylaws, so where's the bylaw, and then sort of hearing that prohibition from other directions and other documentation is not really on the table.
So it's our very, very, very preliminary position that prohibition would mean if we attempted to prohibit it anywhere in the ALR, but perhaps we would restrict it to certain areas of the ALR, or, or at least prohibit it in certain areas and be silent as to the rest, so I think it's a, it's a bit of the terminology, we would seek, certainly, I think, seek to prohibit in some areas where the criteria meets that, the test of odor or aquifer contamination, but we have to be mindful that we, the ministry will still want to see something, so we want to have a clear dividing line, but we want to have it clear in terms of having the responsibility for enforcement to be in the ministry, not necessarily the township.
So what can come back would be something that, that is sort of getting to where we're generally trying to get to, but with the highest likelihood of success, or are we going to start at zero, we don't want anything anywhere, and then we're going to dial it back till they approve it?
I think it would be somewhere in that radius, I think we'd be actually looking to see what the community actually wants, or what council actually wants, and start from that point of view, and then see what the response actually is, I would, I don't see us taking a situation where we know it's entirely impossible, but I think we'll look at something that may have less likelihood or probability of success, because it represents what the community or the council actually wants to see, and I think that's where we start.
Okay, and so, you know, one more maybe naive question, can we not just sort of call the minister and say, well, what will you support, and then we can send it over, like, I, this is sort of, they sort of, they feel like we're negotiating with ourselves here a little bit.
Well, that's where the process began, we actually asked for clarification as to what they would accept, and they said, submit us a bylaw and we'll tell you.
We are negotiating with ourselves, yeah.
That's, I just, one thing I want to, I had a thought here, and I've almost lost it, so, just to be clear, those operations that are in the process or existing, I don't believe a bylaw will be able to retroactive once they're in the process, there are some that are existing in the Township of Langley, and there's some that are in the process, but they've made application, they're down the road, it's very difficult for us to then go back and retroactive, this bylaw will take several months, and my experience with the ministry is, I mean, even for our own process, it takes a couple of months to get it to a point where it's through reading, and then off to the minister, and then the minister's going to sit on it for a while, so there's a bit of a time delay here, and these, these operations that are already applied are, are in the process, they're, they're not going to be turned back, is what I'm assuming.
Two comments, your worship, I guess, on an expedited basis, with the provincial government usually means about a year, historically, sometimes a little bit quicker, the normal process would take longer, that's our first comment. The second comment, I guess, would be then in terms of, in terms of trying to deal with the, the implications or the process of this, I think we have to be very cautious in that, because there could be some unforeseen consequences, so, so I think that is going to be our greatest challenge, is making sure we're looking at something and not, not overlooking something along the way.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, just some clarification, then maybe through the mayor to Mr. Backen, the way that the, this motion is written, does this potentially open us up to becoming the enforcement arm that we're maybe concerned about for the ministry, or are you satisfied that the way the motion is written, that this, that that doesn't open us up to that?
I think we're fine, I, we don't see the intent as being something that would open us up, because I think we all understand how this could play out, so as long as council's comfortable with that, we would look at trying to come up with something that's going to give us the greatest, I guess, possibility, probably not probability, but possibility of this thing being successful, but it's going to be a bit of an uphill battle with what we're, we're dealing with, I mean, there's all sorts of challenges, and I think council's now getting a sense of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no further comments or questions, so I'm going to call a question on I3. Carries unanimously. Move on to I4, now there's, I4, basically, there's several dates, and it looks to me that October the 4th is a, is a Friday in the afternoon would be the one of, and I think it'd be helpful of council to motion, now, Mr. Backen, would October 4th, 1:00 PM be appropriate, because we do have conflict in the morning with...
Your worship, just to revisit, we had, that was one of the dates before, and we were close to settling upon it, but a member of council expressed concern about, because of the metro responsibilities, I'm not sure what you feel would be the appropriate time to return from metro, so that's why we brought it back with a new date, which was September the 21st, that unfortunately is a Saturday, so either it's the dates on the list, with the new date being September the 21st, which is clear, but it's a Saturday, and council does have obligations at, at community events, or, or back to one of the other dates with the focus being on October the 4th.
So October the 4th, if we were to commence in the afternoon, I mean, metro generally is, I mean, is down by 12, you never know, but this gives enough time to get back, and if we're a little bit late, I'm sure you can hold off for a little bit, so I'm just wondering if, if we just said 1 o'clock, and if it happens to be 1:30 by the time we get the thing started, we...
I would suggest the afternoon of October the 4th, your worship, that we can simply hold until the agreement arrives.
Yeah, just say the afternoon, okay. Okay, so if I could have a motion to receive, and then to confirm the date of October the 4th in the afternoon?
So is all one motion?
All one motion, yeah, it's Counselor Whitmarsh, second, Counselor Arnison, discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question on I4. Carries unanimously, and I'm going to add another, other business item, and that's coming forward from our council priority committee meeting earlier today, and the motion that was approved by the committee, I'll read it, was moved by Mayor Froos, second by Counselor Woodward, that the council priorities committee recommends that council refer cannabis retail to staff for consideration of a regulatory scheme, including public consultation, and that council consider this motion as other business of the May 27th, 2019, regular afternoon or evening meeting, was carried, was one in opposition, so the motion that I will put on the floor right now is that council rec, refer the cannabis retail to staff for consider, cannabis retail question, I have some questions, I suppose, to staff for consideration of regulatory scheme, including public consultation, also move, is there a second or? Counselor Woodward, any discussion on that? Counselor Long?
Yeah, it's, it's just a little, I'd feel more comfortable if we put, say, the issue of, because this seems a little bit...
I think she's captured that.
...direct, saying we're going to do it, so the issue of kind of opens it up a little bit.
I think that was the intent, so.
That might make Counselor Ferguson a little happier over there.
Okay, anything else, Counselor Ferguson?
I don't want to repeat what I've said today, but all, again, all larger communities, Delta, Surrey, Richmond, Langley City, Coquitlam have decided not to move at this point in time, I think we should exercise more caution, that's why I oppose, thank you.
Thank you, and just to repeat, and that's a good comment, is that this is really to go out, you know, come back with something that's concrete, council still has the option, once we have more information, to say no, that is our option, that's not off the table, but we certainly want to, you know, I think that we need to give an answer at some point, and if the other communities are, have already said no, they've made that decision, but I believe we need to make that decision based on good evidence and hearing back from our community, so I'm, I certainly will be supporting this, thank you. I'll call the question, and we'll call this I5, is that correct? And carries, Counselor Ferguson, opposed, is there any other business? Seeing none.